Okay. We're gonna call to order the city council meeting for Monday, May first, two thousand and twenty-three. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, and a vote call, Amanda.
Jeff Delkey.
Here.
Tracy Coach.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Tim Petrie.
Here.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Here.
Scott Stackmesser.
Here.
Adam Husky.
Here.
We can skip over number four, everyone is here, which brings us to five, which is input from the public. Anyone wishing to address the council on something that's on this agenda, or something you'd like to see on a future agenda, please step up to the podium, my right, your left, and just state your name and address for the record. Input from the public.
Hello, my name is William Mato, I'm for, I live on eighteen hundred Jefferson Street, right here in Two Rivers. Um, I heard, I, I got wind on Facebook that the softball diamond in, in Neshota Beach, one of the softball diamonds is gonna be getting, getting removed, all I wanna say is, I wished it wasn't being removed, because I feel like that, that, that softball diamond is used by some people and they, and they enjoy it. And my family from Alcorn and, uh, Green Bay would always go there in the summer and Christmas and the summertime, we'd play kickball and stuff like that, we had fifteen or twenty of us and we'd bring probably eighty, ninety, eighty to a hundred dollars worth of groceries from Pick and Save and have a picnic there all day. Um, and then the other thing is too, my, uh, uh, four-wheelers, ATVs and UTVs, I feel like that they're not dangerous and I feel like it, it's tougher to manage a golf cart, uh, it's, uh, to manage a golf cart and those are legal in the city, um, I can't, if those are, if those are tough to manage, you know, a little harder to drive than why, 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 why is, uh, why is ATP, UTV so mu- so much more dangerous and reckless? I feel like if, you, you can't, you know, pick, you know, an apple and the oranges and separate them, you know, I mean, good for the goose is good for the gander, that's all I wanna say.
Thank you very much, Jim, I appreciate it. Anybody else, input, input from the public? All right, see none, we're gonna move on to number six, which is council communications. Uh, any council member have any other communications via phone, email, in person, that they'd like to share with the rest of the council? Darla.
There was that one communication that came through today to everybody's email, so I don't know if you wanna talk about that, or, but I think every, everybody would've gotten it.
Yeah, and I did send her, um, an email back, I did not hear back from her, but I sent it about five minutes after getting that, uh, that letter to me and kinda gave an explanation of the process that we're going through right now with it, with the, uh, parking at Neshota Beach, um, some sort of maybe a timeline and, and the fact that, uh, you're gonna have to pick and choose, um, residents and tax bills and so on and so forth, just to kinda go off her email, so.
It makes sense what she was saying.
Mm-hmm. So, um, I did address that one, anything further?
I was gonna say, obviously, there's a lot more work to be done on that proposal, it's not imminent for this year.
Yep.
Lot more discussion to take place, and if there ever is a policy, if it makes financial sense, and that's a big question we still need to address, um, to have a fee, uh, at the beach, it's a pretty simple matter of policy, if it's resident, non-resident, or resident and, and/or property owner, taxpayer, non-resident, non-taxpayer, but, uh, that's a ways off yet for coming back to council for any further discussion.
I know I made clear in my conversation with her that there is, in my opinion, a distinction between a taxpayer and a resident. Uh, somebody that lives here year-round has fees and other things that they have to associate with their utility bills every month, and, and that has to say something too, so.
Gotten a lot of play out there lately, more than it has in, in front of any public body, so.
Yep.
Pretty robust Facebook discussion just last week.
Although I did tell her I've never been in favor of this either, but it is something we're looking at, because the more, majority of people up on council wanna take a look at it, and rightfully so. Thank you, Darla, anybody else, council communications? Jeff?
I had an email last week about, uh, and actually I did a little follow-up too with the Facebook chatter on it, about wondering if we can switch from an at-large to, well, they said aldermen for, instead of council members, but I think they, what they really wanted was more representation divided throughout the city. And I didn't think nothing of it at first, but then when you go and look at it, I think most of us are from the north side. Almo- almost all of us.
No Bonnie's not.
Except Bonnie.
I looked at the addresses for all of us, and we're all kinda clustered, so there'd be like no representation for like two-thirds of the city.
Well, never wonder if we could possibly get it on a council agenda to at least discuss it.
I did reply to that email as well and gave him, um, my thoughts on it and where I stood on it, but, uh, yeah, I mean, that's up to two council members, I just personally said I wouldn't put it on there, because I didn't believe in it, but that doesn't mean two other council members couldn't, uh, couldn't put it on an agenda for discussion.
I would like to see it if anyone else wants to. Sign with me. Talk to me later.
Any two council members, or the council president, or the city manager, I'll defer to council on this one. Uh, just briefly, and Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe if the, if this council or the community were to look at representation by aldermanic districts, that would likely be a charter ordinance. Under state statute, if you have city manager form of government, at-large, election of council members comes along with it, but that is something you could deviate from by char- charter ordinance, excuse me, which, not to go too deep, either would, uh, require action by the council on an ordinance, on that ordinance change, which would then lay on the table for a specified period of time to allow a public petition if folks wanted it, put on the ballot rather than simply going into effect, or it could be placed in front of the voter, so those are the two means of adopting a charter ordinance.
That's my recollection, I, I know I've reviewed that in the past, and I think that's the case with, uh, with what you might call a pure council manager form of government. I do think it would require, um, a charter ordinance, I'd be happy to double-check on that and get back to the council with a memo. Interested in that.
And honestly, there are variations on that, uh, O'Clair, I believe it's still the case, has a sort of a hybrid, their city manager form, but they did a charter ordinance at a point in time where, I don't know the exact numbers, but X number of their council members are elected by district, and another number of council members are elected at-large. So, there are, if the council or the community were to consider a charter ordinance, there are options out there.
Yes, Bill?
I really think that something like that would totally divide our community. I think the way it is now keeps our community together, makes us all stronger, and makes us look out for everybody better. So I think switching, drawing lines around the city would divide us, I really don't think.
I mean, I, I would tend to agree with you, I mean, I, I wouldn't want somebody up here just petitioning for my corridor, while everybody else just said, "Well, that doesn't work with my corridor," when we're all one big corridor, uh, right here in the city. Um, obviously, anyone can run for, for a council that lives anywhere within the city, and we've had people that have run in different parts of the city, and some have won, some have not won. I mean, that's just kind of how the community views it, I don't think anyone checked out everybody's address and said, "Hey, they're from the north side, I want them," and "They're from the south side, I don't want them," I don't think that's the case. Bonnie, I know, lives on the south side, 'cause I know where she lives, um, and, and she keeps getting re-elected, so I don't think that's the case at all. Yeah, for the first time, Bonnie, for the first time. But I mean, do, do, how, how do you feel on that, Bonnie, seeing you are the representation here in the south side, I guess, so to speak?
Well, I, I'd wanna think about it, and I'd want to hear other people, um, opinions about it. I, I sometimes think that, and maybe I'm wrong, but I sometimes think, things happen. The south side is a big experimental thing, "Oh, we have this idea, let's put it on the south side, see if it works." That's, I'm telling you, that's how I feel, I'm not telling you if that's true, okay? But I do kinda feel that way.
Okay. Yes, Darla?
One thing I would ask is that if there are people who are interested in having us go over to that type of system, that they kinda give us an idea as to why they think that we should do it, and what would be the benefits compared to how we're doing it right now. I'd be, I'd be interested to understand their thinking on this, why it would be an important thing to be done, 'cause it's very involved.
Any other ones, Jeff? Oops, a little weak. All right, anybody else? Oh, Scott, go ahead.
It's, I don't know, I don't know if it's really council communications, but I don't know where else to put it. So, in the mail this week, I got "Weaving with Purpose" from WPPI Energy, our favorite topic lately. But inside, as I was reading through it, um, in here, under "Shining Stars," Paul Fabian, Lion Crew Foreman for Two Rivers Utilities. Made it in here, so, good job. Just let me point that out, 'cause I actually saw, and it's like, "Oh, Two Rivers is in here, yes!" So, good job.
All right, thank you, thanks for bringing that up, and thank you to Paul. Anybody else? All right, see none, we're gonna go to council reports from boards, commissions, or committees, does anyone have anything they need to report on?
You know, I'm gonna say, say something. Um, first of all, as far as, uh, EAB, Environmental Advisory Board, um, we are coming along just great with our initiatives and, um, not really too much has changed since the last time, um, I spoke on it, but in the future, we'll have a lot more to say. For, um, Main Street, Two Rivers Main Street achieved their two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three accreditation by the Main Street America Program, and Main Street does that to ensure that our program is following best practices and follows the Main Street model, and this is one of the ways in which, um, Main Street can provide accountability to the community stakeholders, so congratulations to Main Street on that. And, uh, new business introduction, um, there's now a business called Meridian Wellness at fifteen oh nine Nineteenth Street, and it's run by a gal named Tammy Tripler, she's been a registered nurse for almost twenty-six years, and she took six months off of work during the COVID pandemic, as it was waning, um, to learn more about healing through eastern practices, so that's basically what Meridian Wellness is gonna be about. Is, uh, the practices can positively impact people's overall well-being, and she'd like to be able to spread that throughout the community. On Saturday, this past Saturday, there was a ribbon cutting for our new bookstore downtown, Paper Crane Bookstore, and that was very well, um, attended, and, uh, we're very fortunate to have a business like that in our downtown area, fits in very, very well. And then, um, Rebel Massage, which is on Washington Street now, will have their ribbon cutting on Thursday, June fifteenth, and the ribbon cutting at Meridian Wellness will be on Thursday, June fifteenth as well. Um, the times are just a little bit different, so, um, check out the new businesses and welcome them, and, uh, we, we've pretty much filled up the empty storefronts, so we're doing good there.
Anything else? Nope. Anybody else? Yes, Bill?
Oh, we had a committee on aging meeting this morning, and, uh, Wendy Hutterer from the Aging and Disability Resource Center in the Manitowoc County says that there's thirty-five dollar food vouchers available for people that are over sixty years old. Also, Friends of the Senior Center, new, donated a new bottle-filling fountain at the senior center by the front desk. Uh, we, uh, talking about volunteers last month, this month, we had ten kids volunteer to the senior center for their, uh, monthly birthday party, every, last Friday of the month, they have birthday party for members that, uh, have birthdays that are that month, so the seniors wanted the kids to come back, definitely, they enjoyed them so much, and it was actually the swing choir, and they actually performed for them, besides helping them with the party. Uh, let's see. There's gonna be a thousand-member bash next Friday at the senior center to celebrate the over one thousand members. And, uh, the senior's buying a second trust car, and they're buying it from Cranic Chevrolet instead of getting it from Madison. They'll have two cars available, so they'll be able to do double the work, instead of turning people down, and you can go to the doctor, or wherever, go to a friend's house and have lunch, someone, maybe you can get a ride, gotta schedule a ride, I... Arla, then, don't you have to do it a week in advance, or two weeks in advance, something like that?
I'm not sure if it's a week or two weeks, I think at least a week, and then they set up the, for the schedule. Or you try a last-minute type thing, maybe they can fit you in.
And that's a good service that we provide down there for those that can't drive anymore.
Oh.
Twenty-four hours?
Yeah, and you get a, you, you buy a ten-dollar card, and it's a dollar per ride, and it's only within the city limits. Um, and I wanna say they're also picking up and bringing people down to the senior center, and that may be free.
Yeah.
That I would.
It's good to get people out of their houses that can't drive and get them down to socialize with other people. The senior center's a great spot to do that at.
Uh, another thing that, uh, the representative from the schools came, and he talked about Raider Manufacturing Program. Uh, yeah, a little manufacturing program going on at the high school, and he was actually talking about opening a storefront on Main Street. And, uh, I'm sure we should talk to, but we. So far, it's like, if you go into Cool City Brewing, all the signage in there is made at the Raider Manufacturing, and the, the, uh, boards they use, trays they use for serving flights were all made there, so, uh... People, people weren't a trade. There's things happening at the high school, so.
Yeah, anybody else? I got a couple notes from our advisory rec board meeting, uh, the plan for Neshota Park, the master plan, Mike is hoping to have before us at council for the May fifteenth meeting. A lot of public input, uh, including Facebook, there was a survey out on Facebook, there was an open house, uh, several meetings, so we think we have a pretty good plan to, uh, move forward with, uh, for Neshota Park, it looks really, really nice. Mike and his team have put a lot of work into it, as has the rest of the advisory rec board. Uh, work will be starting soon on Xander Park, uh, and as well at the, as well as the library for the, uh, the, uh, book walk. Um, they got contractors lined up and set to go, I know Parks and Rec will be doing some of the work on their own, and then the contractor, I believe, will be also assisting for a part of that. And the tree inventory, which we got a grant for, is gonna be starting here pretty quickly, is that right, Mike?
Yeah, yeah, next couple of weeks.
Next couple of weeks, so we're gonna, we got a grant earlier on, uh, to get an inventory of the trees we have within the city. Uh, so that's kinda what we talked about at advisory rec board, and then just a quick shout-out to the high school on their volunteer day, I saw a lot of great work being done, uh, throughout many parts of, uh, the city, including over even at Scotty Powell's house. They did a nice yard cleanup for a guy that does so much for the city and for athletics up at the high school, uh, that can't do much on his own, uh, due to his cerebral palsy. It was nice to see them, uh, get over there and, and really help clean up his yard, uh, over the weekend, so. A lot of volunteering done by the high school, I think that was Friday and through the weekend, so hats off to those guys for doing a great job. And that's all I got. Uh, Greg, city managers report.
Yeah, just to plug Raider Manufacturing again, yeah, really, they, they've got a vendor lined up that's gonna help now with powder coating, the unique design they did for the back of the stage out in the park, Schmidt Brothers Stage. Also, their handicraft, a, a good selection of gift items is available over at Schrader's, and the signage you may have taken note of at Lake Shore Rocket Gem, also another product from Raider Manufacturing, so. Wow, the idea of a, of a retail storefront somewhere downtown would be amazing.
One more plug, Mike says that the sign at Xander Park is gonna be done on the archway as you walk in to the, uh, storybook walk, will be done by Raider Manufacturing as well.
Fantastic, let's, let's hope after they graduate, we have some full-time business people here, here in the community from that. Uh, city managers report, hey, I, I realize the most popular member of staff when I see them, so. We start off again featuring, uh, Daisy, the newest addition to the Two Rivers Police Department and its K-nine unit. Uh, uh, starting off as we always do in the area of personnel, uh, fire chief, the police and fire commission has scheduled interviews on May eleven, next week, Thursday. Uh, interviews have been completed, and we're in the process, I think, of extending an offer to a finalist candidate on the Public Works Maintenance Worker Vacancy, eager to get that crew, uh, back up to full strength. After about two more po- uh, concrete pours over in Central Park, they'll be out tackling some of those utility openings that need to be fixed all over town, so. And the progress on those, by the way, I don't have a slide on it, but reflects, uh, some great efforts by customer service and the water utility staff to make sure that we've committed all of the twenty-two carried over into two thousand and twenty-three, uh, dollars, uh, grant dollars to assist with, uh, lead service lateral replacements on the private side. Uh, firefighter paramedic, the application deadline was, uh, April twenty-eighth, last week, Friday, and acting chief, Murat, which is, uh, you come in, how many applicants, four?
I believe there's four.
Four, or Amanda, four? Yeah, okay, I'll wing it, there's four, and, and, uh, that process will be moving right along. Uh, police officer interviews are completed, uh, help me out, chief, we have, if, if you had to grab the mic with the status on that real quick? I don't know how much you have as far as what can be shared, uh, or not.
Sure, uh, the first one that we gave a conditional offer to, um, based on passing the background, the psychological, drug screen, physical, all that should be wrapping up on Thursday, um, with a higher date then of Friday this week. And then the final one, um, opening, which would ultimately be, uh, Brian Colmeyer's position that has finally fallen down through the ranks, and now will be a police officer position. Um, that one, I had just put out a conditional offer for, that person is just getting, just got the conditional offer. Out of those things, um, however, this individual would have to, so we would be sending them to the police academy, so there's obviously additional, uh, conditions on that, one of which would be, uh, the most obvious is that you pass a physical readiness test, which gets you into that acad- that academy, and then obviously, conditions that you successfully pass that before you become a full-time officer, so.
So one candidate, if all goes well, one candidate that could go into field training mode right away and be out on the street, another that has the academy.
Yeah, and that first one is, uh, more of like a lateral transfer, has nine years of experience, so I would imagine that would be a pretty sped-up, uh, field training program, I don't think that would involve a whole lot, and getting that person out on the road fairly quickly. Um, the other one would take a little bit longer, um, because obviously, they'd have to do the academy, which would last, um, through the summer. which would last through the summer at part-time wages with those conditions to then become a full-time employee, probably around August, September. With fingers crossed that we could get them into a current academy. There aren't a ton of academies that are available. So depending on where that takes place, we're hoping that we can get, we're first on a waiting list for one in June right away at N W T C. So hopefully, fingers crossed, that works out. Otherwise, the next opportunity would probably be more of an August opportunity and that would be far across the state. Fox Valley, for instance, if you're not aware, all their academies are filled up for two years straight. So we'd be on a waiting list for two years. So who pays for that training? Is that something that we're paying for or is that something that? Yeah, on the front, on the front end, there's a couple of variables there. Say if we were to send somebody 75 miles or more outside our area, so that would be travel, lodging, meals and the academy. We could do so and the state would reimburse most of that to include the lodging and the travel and everything. If it's within 75 miles, that's something where we would likely provide transportation for that person so that we're not paying an exorbitant amount. However, the academy would be reimbursed through the state. Thank you.
Probably have more of an update in two weeks, so at the next regular meeting.
Yeah, so nothing's free and it's front-end loaded, but on the back end, we do get reimbursed quite a great deal if we do sponsor somebody through the program, which in this case would be something that we'd sponsor. And we would look at a commitment under those circumstances.
Perfect. Yeah, in the past, we've had letters of agreement with some, if somebody leaves of their own choice early in their employment with some provision for reimbursement of the city on a declining scale basis prorated. Good work, good work. All the departments there, we're working hard to keep those positions filled. Central Park West 365, update first on the construction front. It was busy out there last week. Let's hope good weather returns, but it's busy this week. But our city crews poured the floor and the steps and the first, or the two bands of colored concrete in front of the Schmidt Brothers Stage. If all goes well, they've got a couple more pores of regular concrete out there between those bands and that will conclude their major work on the site. There's still some utility work with the speaker folks when they come back. The crew from the subcontractor that's doing the Form Right Water feature, we're out there installing some of the water jets and the lighting, the recessed lighting. And the crew from Canig Construction, the subcontractor to Vinton on the pavilion building, it was kind of hard to miss that they did get delivery of the roof trusses and they've got the trusses and sheathing up on the pavilion. So things are really starting to take shape over there. We expect the major trees and shrubs for landscape plantings to go in in a couple of weeks yet. The project remains on target, or would for completion by mid-June. And just a reminder, plans are for the Schmidt Brothers Pavilion, excuse me, the Schmidt Brothers Stage, to get dedicated with a special day of music and activities on Saturday, July 15, and the overall park dedication Saturday, Sunday, July 16. So please keep those on your calendar. On the fundraising front, pleased to report that you remember our initial goal for private fundraising or donations from the community, $800,000. As of today, we stand at $810,756. So that's over that initial goal, I'll say initial goal, by $10,756. We still have our fingers crossed on a possible $50,000 grant from the W E D C's Vibrant Spaces Grant Program, and they've said they expect to make announcements in early May. So we expect there to be something shareable there shortly. Hope for the best. And this is a little bit seat of the pants right now, but it's the best estimate of remaining funding needs at this time is about $75,000, which, you know, if we were lucky enough on the grant, would be about two-thirds of that. So, and that's before touching the $50,000 contingent appropriation that's in Parks and Rec for the park and getting some of the lighting upgraded over at Nishoto Park. Bottom line, we're looking pretty darn good on the fundraising. The community has really stepped up. We are, of course, tonight, you've got on the agenda a resolution to dedicate the park pavilion in honor of Jim Totti, Lake Council Member. People are certainly still welcome to donate. We could use some more donations. Pavers remain available. Kind of fascinating here, just indicative of community buy-in. Lisa in our office worked up this tally, but 103 of the four-by-eight pavers, 25 of the eight-by-eight pavers at $500 a piece, 39 of the 16-by-16 inch pavers at $1,000 each, eight of them with custom logos, and those are $2,500 a piece. So a total of 175 pavers bringing in, there's some cost of course, but bringing in gross donations of $92,100. So really great buy-in. We added a couple of paver fields along the way. There's still room to get your paver in, even a 16-by-16 will fit. So we're still, I think two donations came in today for pavers. So great things happening over in the park. Mike Mathis has been doing a wonderful job doing project management from the cities and with support from a very good team from Public Works and our utilities and an outstanding contractor, as we knew going into it, with Vinton. Their project manager's been great to work with. So good news on the progress of construction, good news on the fundraising, fundraising. Averick Peterson there, you might, you might know his grandma who sits on the committee. You might know his dad who kind of hangs out over at the fire station as one of our fine firefighter paramedics. And Averick there is pretty excited and has been from early on about this project. So highlighting the fact that we've hit our fundraising goal. Good stuff. Switching to other community infrastructure, Lincoln Street project, by way of update there, Matt's here if there are any questions. Mammoth has installed a little over two blocks of water main from 17th Street North to about 100 feet north of the 19th Street intersection. They'll be continuing north to 22nd Street with the water main. As weather permits and looking at possibly starting installing the private services next week, is that this week or next week? Next week, okay, this was written in real time, next week. Therefore, be some inspection meetings scheduled out on site, but it's coming along well. We're hoping to see that project wrapped up in August? Late August, which would be pretty darn good in a place that doesn't have spring. So coming along pretty good over on Lincoln Street. I don't have a slide on it, but mailed notices went out last Monday to property owners along 17th Street from East Park to Zlatnik. Last year's street project, there were about 50 street trees that'll be going in there next week. Utility locates have been called in and you'll be seeing planting stakes going in along that street. Plus, we'll be getting back to Madison Street from two years ago, where from 19th to 22nd, there's still some more trees to go in. So that's the major thrust for this year's tree planting, along with one replacement on 24th Street from last year, a couple of trees that still need straightening over there, I noticed this weekend, and the trees for Central Park. So a lot of trees going in the ground this year. If you go out on the city's website under Public Works, thanks largely to our new Public Works Administrative Assistant, Sue Riley, with a supporting cast that includes the city engineer and the city civil engineer. There's some really good information out there as far as update on current city projects with a project directory, whether it's shown there, whether it's 17th Street, Central Park West, future DOT project on Memorial Drive. Opportunity here to update folks and we will be doing periodic Facebook posts with links to this to encourage more people to use this resource. Really well done by Public Works and it was funny because last week I called down there, actually I called Dave Casebeer at the wastewater plant and said, we really need, for the next report to council, we need some pictures of that screw press and a little narrative. He said, I think Sue already has it and it's out on the website. So kudos, Public Works, well done.
Will they be doing something similar for upcoming road construction like that five-year plan we were talking about?
The hope is to get it more public out there. And we're actually meeting a little later this week, talk about the five-year program.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're hoping to get that to the Public Works Committee, certainly in June. And then once adopted by that committee and council, we could share it, well, share it with the community before that, I guess, as a draft, but there's some good work being put in on that. Speaking of that screw press down at the wastewater plant, here's a shot of it being craned in through an opening in the building. That's replacing a easily 25-year-old, older than that, I think, belt press with this much more efficient sludge drying screw press. Should result in the sludge being lower in weight and volume by reducing moisture content to a greater extent. That reduces hauling costs for disposal of the sludge and less maintenance because of fewer moving parts. As you recall, I didn't look up the budget numbers, expensive piece of equipment financed long-term through the state's clean water fund with some principal forgiveness thrown in that paid for a good chunk of this project. So that, we expect that'll be fully operational in June of 2023. Might be something that we could schedule a quick special meeting before the meeting this.
Summer sometime.
For if council members would like to go down for a quick visit. Yeah, it's good stuff. The press is, it's the same stuff, I guess, but it's good. Heartarama has completed its first long weekend at the venerable J. E. Hamilton Community House. They can entertain an audience of about 300 each night. This is the 51st year. The event has raised over $3 million for the American Heart Association. It goes both to the regional and national affiliates of American Heart. A good chunk of it also stays right here in Manitowoc County where it's funded defibrillators and is now funding the upgrade of some of the older defibrillators in public buildings all over the county, including here at City Hall. Tickets for Thursday and Friday nights performances this week are still available and you can purchase them at Tietz's Pickly Wiggly right here in Two Rivers or in Manitowoc if you happen to be down there, but no, do it here, do it here at the Peg. Great show this year. The theme is Holiday Road, celebrating the holidays. And I'll just slide by this first, but I was pleased to appear as a floating holiday on Saturday because I couldn't make up my mind what holiday to be and assisted Ellen Peronto in auctioning off the very artfully done and functional toilet seat for $2,500 on Saturday night. That photo will forever be stricken from the slideshow as we move on. I also pointed out the city managers featuring a Two Rivers tan there. Back over at the senior center, Cinco de Mayo Dinner to Go fundraiser, Friday, May 5th, please preorder at the senior center. An enchilada bake, Spanish rice margarita bars, not a margarita bar, non-alcoholic, preorder by, oops, is it too late? Geez. I didn't read this closely. I bet you if you call over there and throw yourself on the mercy of the staff, you might still be able to buy a ticket and pick it up on Cinco de Mayo, otherwise it'll be, you'll be eating it late and cold. So coming up. Bird walk this coming Saturday, May 6th, out at Woodland Dunes Nature Center. Look and listen for migrant birds and hear them grind about the weather just like the rest of us and birder Joel Trick is the guide. Got to feel bad for those insect eaters because there aren't too many insects out there to eat. On a more serious note, we would note the annual law enforcement officers memorial ceremony for Two Rivers will be held in conjunction with National Police Week, the week of May 14th through May 20th. We'll have that resolution on the next council agenda on May 15. The Two Rivers Memorial Ceremony is Monday, May 15 at noon, mid-span on the 22nd Street Bridge. If you haven't had a chance to attend it, it's a very moving ceremony, beautifully done and commemorates the service of all officers lost in the line of duty, but particularly Leo Rock and Tom Dodge, two of our own, who gave their all in service to the community. That afternoon, at the county law enforcement memorial between the courthouse and the jail, 2:30 is the countywide memorial observance commemorating the seven officers from Manitowoc County, including officers Rock and Dodge, who have given their lives in the line of duty. So keep that in mind, we'll be sure to send a reminder out to council. It was Arbor Day, Arbor Day Observance last Friday at Washington Park. And there you see members of the Mike Mathis family and another local family unidentified in this slide, helping out with planting of trees. And these are ones donated by Silver Creek Nursery, right? They donated about 15 trees for planting in our various parks. So kudos to them and there were no workers comp claims forthcoming from all the activities. We're glad of that. It was shared by a local business last week, pointed out that the shipment of cheese curds or other food from Riverside Foods is proudly stamped with the "Made in Two Rivers" logo that was developed during our branding process. So you can get that on a onesie for a newborn child if they were made in Two Rivers. And it's also going out on products manufactured here in Two Rivers. That's basically it for my update. Under legislative and intergovernmental update, though, of course, you recall two weeks ago, we had Senator Jacques and Representative Sortwell here to talk about state budget with a big emphasis on shared revenues, our biggest single funding source for the city's general fund budget. At that point, we were aware of Governor Evers' proposal, which for Two Rivers, going right to the bottom line, would provide $1.4 million in additional funding from the statewide funding source. Speaker Robin Voss, on behalf of the Assembly Republicans, last Thursday announced his caucus' plans for shared revenues. These highlights are excerpted out of League of Municipalities' update. Over $200 million would be provided in a new supplement for local governments, much as the governor's proposal provided. This would be on top of the existing shared revenues allocations. Those would be left alone as we get them and as every other community gets them now. There would be another, I think it's actually 220 some million from what I've read in other accounts, and it could be used for a wide array of critical local services. Emphasis on police, fire, EMS, public works and transportation. You don't know if that means there'll be waiting factors tied to how much municipality spends on those. I'd kind of hope so because those are a huge chunk of our budget. All communities will see at least a 10% increase. That's good. North of 10% is even better, however, 10% for Two Rivers would be, given our current allotment of shared revenues at $3.9 million, $200,000 less than it was 23 years ago, 10% lift would be about $390,000. Not to look a gift horse in the mouth, it ain't a gift, it's money coming back. That's nice, it's good, it's sure as heck a step in the right direction in the context of an $11 million general fund budget. That would make next year easier and 2025 a bit easier. It doesn't make up for a quarter century of no increases. So not to cast negatives there, but 10% lift would be nice unless it's followed up with future increases in each biennial budget, which sure hasn't been the state's track record. It's a start. As we understand it and as reported by the league, and this is something we heard that especially the assembly was interested in, there would be a one-time appropriation out of the surplus the state has of $300 million in a new three-year pilot program to encourage creativity in supporting local services in many areas. And it, with an emphasis on shared services. See the word combined, words combined services don't appear on a second bullet point there, but this $300 million is about encouraging combined services. That's nice. I think we can generally figure out those opportunities at the local level without too much influence from Madison, but there are some criteria there. And then there is in the proposal, a proposed increase in EMS funding assistance, pretty significant there from about $2.25 million to $15 million. So that's about a six-fold increase. And law enforcement training reimbursement would help, it would double from $160 per officer to $320 per officer. City of Milwaukee, not that we're the city of Milwaukee, but they'd be given the ability, based on local referendum, local voter approval, to add up to two cents in local option sales tax. I believe most of that, though, is supposed, would have to go to addressing their city of Milwaukee pension system, which is in big financial trouble. And the provision would also have any of their new hires participating in the very well-managed, very well-funded, because it's well-managed, state of Wisconsin retirement system. And they can't use any of it for that streetcar. That was, that's kind of a favorite in Madison, I guess. So that's what we know about the, the assembly. As we've kind of heard coming into last meeting, the Senate's planned a little close to the vest on what they may propose and we'll watch with interest. I did reach out to Representative Sortwell's office today to see if there is any online source, any database or table we can go to, if they run the numbers to see, okay, how much will this mean for individual communities? Because at least ten percent is good, but are there fifteens, are there twenties? From further reading after I left that phone message, it looks like the, the details may be forthcoming this week, based on what the speaker was saying. So watch closely, this is, this is important stuff. And this speaks directly to our ability to provide the kind of services this community is used to in the coming years.
What does the EMS Funding Assistance Program cover? Is that training?
What we get now covers variety. Chief, speak to that. And we got the right guy for EMS because as assistant chief, that's been in Mr. Marak's wheelhouse.
FAP money covers expenses that have to do with our medical services. So it does cover training, it does cover things that aren't included in our budget.
Equipment?
Equipment. We've used FAP in the past to buy equipment, we've used it for training, to send people to training. It's a great program and we've gotten a lot of money from the state for it.
And this one, it looks like, looks like a lot more money may be coming. Was it in the current year, Dave, or the, the most recent budget year, they've also increased the reimbursement rate on Medicaid for EMS?
They have re-increased it. We're going through an audit right now, actually. That was one of the caveats to do that, is we have to go through an audit that we're finishing up at the end of the month to send the Medicare.
No worries there, good.
Can send you something on the FAP, some information on it that would.
I was just kind of interested to see what, what that covered, if it was training, if it was equipment, if it was, I, I was going to ask the Medicare thing as well.
And there's two, there's two separate accounts, there's training and there's also equipment.
Okay, that's a, that's a nice increase and that's good. That's, we need that. And I mean, we're top-notch here in Two Rivers with the equipment you showed me around the fire department. I see the stuff you guys use, which is great, we need that stuff. And we want to make sure that we see it continuing to come.
Plus it keeps us afloat.
Thank you.
Do you find her?
I was just going to add, the law enforcement portion that you see there, what that is, is each officer is mandated to do twenty-four hours at a bare minimum of training per year. And that involves like your firearms training, your emergency vehicle operations training, and then some of the other mandated training. But that's where that comes in. So the state currently, as you can see, that, that wouldn't cover everything. Firearms, for instance, would be an eight-hour day at their wages. So a hundred and sixty dollars isn't quite covering what a, an officer's wages would be. But at the end of the year, provided we mandate and we get all our officers through, they get paid one sixty per officer that we have on the, on the roster. So increasing that would help a great deal.
Thank you.
I guess like we heard from our, our elected, state electeds last time, I understand there will be some maintenance of effort requirements in here, which on the one hand, as I'll say it, as local electeds, you ought to feel a little insulted by because I think you better well know enough what to support and what not to support. But seriously, ain't nobody defunding police, fire, EMS in this organization. And I, and I know among this body. I don't, I don't know that you need to be dictated that from Madison, but if it makes them feel better, so be it, just send the money. So we'll continue to watch this closely and applaud the efforts of our senator and our representative to look out for Two Rivers' best interests on this one. So that's all I have, other than this great, beautiful, peaceful shot of the East Wind River, courtesy of Jeff Dawson.
Peace. Great picture, great report, thank you very much. Onto number nine, which is the consent agenda. Under A, we have presentation of minutes, there are four. We have a city council work session meeting of March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. We also have a city council meeting of April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. There's also the city council reorganization meeting, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. And finally, a city council work session meeting of April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, minutes of meetings, there are three. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under C, summary of verified bills for the month of April, twenty twenty-three, for two million nine hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. And finally, under D, we have applications and petitions, there are two. We have an application for a temporary Class B license from, oh boy, Casa Guadalupe Education Center for Guadalupe Education Center for the Latino-American Bash Festival, July fourteenth through the fifteenth, from twelve P M. to eleven P M. at Neshoto Beach. And we also have an application for landscaping slash tree removal license from Troy Juntin, DBA Troy Juntin Tree Work, for license period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The recommended action is a motion to approve the applications and authorize issuance of the license. The recommended action for the consent agenda as a whole is to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for a motion on this. Thank you, Tracy, do I have a second? Thank you, Bill. Council discussion. All right, see none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? All right, thank you. Onto ten, which are city council formal items. Under A, we have the announcement of city council president's appointments to standing committees for city council. This is for information only, not an action item. So.
You do have the list in your packets and Adam?
And I think everyone got that email as well, is that correct? Did I miss anyone on that? Okay, do you want me to go through them, I can. Personnel and Finance Committee, we have Jeff Dulkey, who will be the chair, as well as Bonnie Shimilunas and myself. Under the Public Works Committee, we have Scott Steckmesser, who will be the chair, as well as Bill Leclerc and Tracy Coach. And under the Public Utilities Committee, we have Darla Leclerc, who will be the chair, Tim Petrie and Jeff Dulkey. Okay, nothing required there, so on to B, which is city managers' appointments to citizen boards, committees and commissions. The recommended action will be to approve the appointments and reappointments as recommended by the city manager. And Greg?
This is on page sixty-one of your packets. One new appointment at this time, and this is a, a familiar face, Keith Lyons. Keith has termed out on the BIDC, has indicated a willingness to serve on the Community Development Authority, which always meets jointly with BIDC, so would propose his appointment. We have a number of people that have been good members of our boards and committees and have agreed to reappointment. I will list their names to show some appreciation for the work that they put in on these citizen boards. Rob Reed, back on to the Advisory Recreation Board. I don't think he's a youth representative.
No.
I don't consider that a compliment, yeah. Preston Jones to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Jane Ralcy to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Betty Bitner to the Business Industrial Development Committee, Bill Keel to the Business Improvement District Board, Marvin Moore to the Business Improvement District Board, Amy McMillan to the Business Improvement District Board. Again, those are all owners of properties and/or businesses within the bid district who serve on that board. Pam Stevens to the Committee on Aging, Don Dubrine, Environmental Advisory Board, Jay Orvis, Environmental Advisory Board, Doug Brandt, Environmental Advisory Board. He was fairly recent appointee to fill a vacancy, but he's taking a reappointment. Stanley Palmer with the E after the L, to be correct. Little typo there on the reappointment to the Library Board. Sharon Slager, reappointed to the Library Board. Kay Coach, reappointment to Plan Commission. I needed to talk to you, actually, this is your appointment, Adam. I thought I'd, I'd asked Lisa to take that one off. I don't know if you want to speak to that one now or not.
Yeah, I mean, we will continue with the status quo as is. Kurt's done a nice job on there and got us through some tough times there. He's very familiar with a lot of what's going on there, very engaged with it. I think that would be a great appointment.
Okay, sorry, was that on the fly? That actually is by council president designation, so it wouldn't be among my appointments. The ordinance provides for that, thank you. Rick Carey from Two Rivers Hotel Group, reappointment to the Room Tax Commission, and Peter Crabbe of the Hamilton Wood Type and Printing Museum. Recall the Room Tax Commission, it's one-year terms. So it is, council later on will pick council member position. Bill Leclerc is currently on there and my ordinance, the city manager. So those are the five on that one. Appointments yet to be filled and we'll get some Facebook postings out, do some outreach. I hope to have most, if not all of these back for the next agenda. There is one position on the Advisory Rec Board. Got a couple names in mind there, council president, and I've had some dialogue on that. Two youth representatives on the Advisory Recreation Board. Those are full voting members. We probably could use a little more dialogue about whether students, as busy as they are with extracurriculars and sports, whether that's feasible. That's been a challenge as far as attendance and we, we've had some really great young people, but they're busy with sports and school commitments. So that one may, we may have a little discussion of that at A R B. before that comes back. We have one vacancy on the Business and Industrial Development Committee, two alternate positions on Zoning Board of Appeals. That's our only board that has designated alternates in case we have trouble fielding a quorum for consideration of an appeal. Community Development Authority and Environmental Advisory Board. We have one remaining vacancy there. So I would request the council at this time approve the one new appointment, Mr. Lyons, the various reappointments as listed, with the exception of Kurt Andrews, because that's a council president appointment.
We have to do that one separately then?
No, that one is, I think that one's actually your call.
You can just, I can just solely do it, okay, perfect, good deal. Okay, so then we're looking for a motion to approve the appointments and reappointments as recommended by the city manager. Do I have a motion on that? Thank you, Tracy, seconded by Tim. Any council discussion? See none, all in favor indicate by saying, oh, I'm sorry.
I just have a question. Is there a age limit on the youth advisory record youth?
I think it was always a high school student is what we always did.
Do they have to be a Two Rivers high school student?
It could be Ron Colley Lutheran homeschool online.
Manitowoc if they come, yeah.
Okay.
Michigan if they live here in the city, yeah.
Okay.
I think, I'm sorry, it's just basically been that high school age demographic.
Or Mr. Haddon, anybody else?
I got nervous when you asked about an age limit. It's an upper. You might be disqualifying one of our Plan Commission members, we both know. No.
Oh, mine, now it's on the record.
There you go.
All right, anything else? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? All right, thank you. Onto C, the official newspaper declaration and bid. The recommended action is a motion to accept the bid as submitted and declare the Herald Times reporter as the official newspaper of the city of Two Rivers. Anything you need to add to that, Greg?
Yeah, cue the groan machine in the background. This is, this is the universally popular item each year where by statute, we are required to have an official newspaper for the publication of city legal ads and minutes and ordinance summaries. It does require that it have a paid subscription basis in the community. I don't think we're quite to the point where the Valders Journal has more subscribers. It might be getting close, I'm sorry, pardon the sarcasm there. But it's a statutory requirement, that's all I can say. Jack could fill you in more. We've had councils vote this down before, but in all honesty, by statute, the city has to abide by that requirement.
Unfortunately, there's been no change in the statute since last year. What Greg indicates is basically the case. There must be a paid subscription, which eliminates from consideration what are called shoppers, like I guess the like that nature.
We don't have that anymore, even.
Oh, that's true, too.
It's not clogging up snow blowers on the east side.
But really, I can't think of any alternative that would apply under the circumstances, so. I think it's a designation that has to be made.
Even in this age of electronic communications and social media, statutes require use of print media for the things we talked about.
Is it a certain amount, a certain percentage of the population of Two Rivers that has to have the right to care to the different of.
The requirements are essentially these. The paper must report news and publish regularly at least once a week for at least two of the five-year period prior to publication of a legal notice. The paper must have published regularly and continuously in the municipality and must have a bona fide paid circulation of at least half of its circulation and a certain designated number of subs, of subscribers.
So of their circulation, at least half, half of it has to be paid, that's what that said, okay. Now, we've seen some changes in this over the years. We used to have to publish council minutes in their entirety. Used to have to publish ordinances in their entirety, we're now a summary form. I, I actually, I guess the minutes have always been the same, we've just shortened them. But it's, the legislature hasn't seen fit to make other changes. I think our zoning and public hearing ads are probably two or three columns wide, they're not single, if I recall. Where are they?
We do the least expensive.
Okay. And our minutes, I believe, I never read them in the paper, but they're single column as well.
How sad that we got to do this. What a waste of money.
I was just going to say that I understand that like with the HTR, it has to be printed. But their presence online is vastly better than the print. I'm just wondering, are they putting this information out on their, on their website? They are? So it's not just printed, people are able to see it then if they, because like I have a subscription for online.
Yeah, so when we get the proof of publication back, it usually tells you it was in the papers and then it was online for twenty-eight days.
Okay, okay, good.
So we are at least getting that coverage.
Does anyone wish to make a motion? Thank you, Bonnie, do I have a second? Thank you, Bill. Council discussion amongst each other. All right, see none, this will be a roll call vote because it is a declaration. Amanda?
Tim Petrie. Bonnie Shimilunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Husky?
Aye.
Jeff Dulkey?
Aye.
Tracy Coach?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Okay, on to D, city manager's designation of acting city manager. City manager has designated Police Chief Ben Minor to serve as the acting city manager in his absence for the coming year. The recommended action is none, it's for information only.
So Ben would typically be the go-to person. If I'm out of town for a weekend or longer, I'll usually notify council with an email and remind you of his cell number. If for some reason our schedules are such that he's not available, then I could designate another department heading would so inform you.
Okay. Onto E, it's an ordinance to amend section six dash five dash twenty-two entitled Licensing and Keeping of Chickens and Ducks in the municipal code to provide requirements and standards for chickens and ducks in the city. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance. And we'll kick that over to Greg.
Yeah, basically from with, when our city clerk and the police department sat down to look at various ordinances, especially those enforced by the code enforcement officer, it was found that that position was not named as the inspecting entity. When somebody's getting a license or renewing their license for backyard ducks or chickens. Was it the zoning administrator previously, Amanda, or?
The ordinance didn't include anything about having to have the property inspected.
It was silent on that, okay. So this does set that requirement with the code enforcement officers designated person.
Okay, looking for a motion on that. Thank you, Scott, seconded by Jeff. Sorry, seconded by Jeff. Council discussion. See none, this is a roll call vote, Amanda.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Husky?
Aye.
Jeff Dulkey?
Aye.
Tracy Coach?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Tim Petrie? And Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
All right, thank you for that. Looks like seven to one, correct? Okay, going on to F, which is a resolution naming May thirteenth, twenty twenty-three as International Migratory Bird Day. Recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the resolution, which is in our packets. Anything you want to add to that, Greg?
I guess I'd just note this, this is consistent with our efforts to promote Two Rivers and our surrounding area for nature-based tourism. There are a lot of birders who already visit the area between the resources out at uh Woodland Dunes Nature Center and the incredible flyway for waterfowl that we got along Lake Michigan. There's some pretty amazing rafts of, of different waterfowl that you see out there at different times. Not to mention one of the largest long-tailed duck populations, I'm told, in North America offshore here. Uh so uh in keeping with that and our designation, we're not just a migratory bird city, but as a bird city, it's appropriate to note this, just one of the many great things about where we live.
Looking for a motion on that? I'll make that motion. Thank you, Tracy, seconded by Jeff. Saw and heard, any council discussion? See none, roll call vote, Amanda.
Adam Husky?
Aye.
Jeff Delkey?
Aye.
Tracy Coach?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Tim Petrie? Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
All right, on to G, it's a resolution designating Pavilion Building in Central Park West as the James Taddy Memorial Pavilion. The recommended action, motion to read and adopt the resolution, Greg.
I'd just introduce this by saying that uh uh Mr. Taddy's generous donation to the city, forty-three thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars in a life insurance policy that he designated for the city and which came to us shortly after his passing, was the first community money into that fundraising effort for Central Park West. That's now topped eight hundred, ten thousand dollars. Uh we had some unfinished business there to circle back and name something appropriate in the park for Mr. Taddy. As, as it turns out, the pavilion's available and what better tribute to a, a modest, unassuming guy who fixed a lot of people's appliances for seers over the years, served a total of, excuse me, I'm gonna lose track here, twenty-three years on city council, gave generously of his time to the community, driving that trust car, scooping ice cream at Sunday, Thursday, and uh was, was an institution in the community. So with that, I recommend council adoption of this resolution, which we'll, we can uh, you want that read in advance, Adam, or wait, make sure it passes?
Yeah, why don't we uh read it in advance?
Okay, there you go. This is a resolution designating the pavilion in Cent- we'll correct that typo. Central Park West as the James Taddy Memorial Pavilion. Whereas the late James Taddy, nineteen forty-five to two thousand twenty, grew up and lived his life in Two Rivers. And whereas Jim lived a lifetime of service to his community, serving on the Two Rivers City Council for a total of twenty-three years. And whereas in addition to his service on city council, Mr. Taddy was an active volunteer in the community, whether helping out at senior center, driving the transit van for the local hospital, volunteering at his church or working at various community events. And whereas Jim Taddy continued to demonstrate his love for Two Ri- Rivers, even after his passing in the year twenty twenty, as he provided in his estate for generous donations to the city's fire department, police department, senior center, and to the Two Rivers City Government as a whole, totaling well over two hundred thousand dollars. And whereas the city council on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, directed that Mr. Taddy's donation of forty-three thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars to the city be deposited in the Parks and Recreation Capital Projects Fund to be applied to this, what we were then calling the Splash Pad Project, which has since evolved into the Central Park West three sixty-five project. Whereas council action was taken, quote, "with the understanding that the council will provide further direction in the future regarding the project elements to be funded and proper rec- recognition for Mr. Taddy's bequest." And whereas that first community donation of the Central Park West three sixty-five project laid the foundation for successful eight hundred thousand dollar fundraising effort that has made that one point six five million dollar project a reality. Now in the midst of construction for mid-June completion and a mid-July dedication. Now therefore be it resolved, the city of Two Rivers hereby recognizes James Taddy's lifetime of leadership and selfless service to our community by designating the pavilion structure at the very heart of Central Park West as the James Taddy Memorial Pavilion, as an enduring honor to this modest, big-hearted man who lived, who so loved Two Rivers. And be it further resolved that this designation be commemorated with a memorial plaque to be placed conspicuously on the pavilion building in his honor dated this first day of May, two thousand twenty-three.
Very nice, uh looking for a motion on this. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Scott, seconded by Darla. Any council discussion? I think it's very fitting for all he's done for Two Rivers and getting this project uh kickstarted, so to speak. Uh it's a resolution, uh Amanda, roll call please.
Jeff Delkey?
Aye.
Tracy Coach?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Tim Petrie? Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Husky?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. On to H, Proclamation of National Drinking Water Week of May seventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Recommended action is a motion to read and adopt the proclamation. It looks like Andrew's on his way up to do just that.
Uh proclamation naming the week of May seventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three is National Drinking Water Week, whereas water follows a natural cycle from earth to air to earth again. And whereas water is a basic and essential need of all living things. And whereas our health, comfort and standard of living depend upon an abundant supply of safe drinking water. And whereas the ever tightening standards of drinking water make better facilities and better trained personnel essential. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Two Rivers hereby proclaims this week of May seventh through thirteenth, twenty twenty-three as National Drinking Water Week in the city of Two Rivers and urges all citizens to recognize the special contributions of the Two Rivers Water Department and the special efforts of the staff work every day to enhance the well-being of the citizens of our community dated this first day of May, twenty twenty-three.
Right, uh looking for a motion on this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jeff, seconded by Tracy. Thank you very much. Any council discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Very good. On to I, which is a proclamation of Professional Municipal Clerks Week, April thirtieth through May sixth, twenty twenty-three. The recommended action is motion to waive reading and adopt the proclamation, Greg.
You know, actually, the, the deputy clerk put that in as a wave reading and I don't feel right sitting here saying that.
I was just gonna say, why are we not reading this, which he's sitting next to me?
I ju- I just threw the deputy clerk under the bus for that one. I, it was my oversight, but I would modify that to say please uh.
Please do.
Read and adopt. I'd make Amanda read, it's kind of self-praising, so. Proclamation of Municipal Clerks Week, April thirty to May sixth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal services to all. And whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the Information Center on Functions of Local Government and Community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county and international professional organizations. And where it is, is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk, first by getting our new sign that says professional municipal clerk, city clerk. Uh now therefore, the city council of the city of Two Rivers declares the week of April thirtieth through May sixth, twenty twenty-three as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extends appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Amanda Bearinbrook and Deputy Clerk Lisa Keen, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. I'd just add a quick line there, they really represent our democracy on the front lines at the local level and do it very well with, with objectivity and yes, professionalism. Dated this first day of May, twenty twenty-three.
We're lucky to have the best. Looking for a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jeff, seconded by Bill, thank you. Any council discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you very much. On to J, Authorization to Contract for City Hall HVAC Control System Improvements. The recommended action is a motion to authorize the city manager to contract for the project with Shouse Mechanical of Manitowoc based on its proposal at a cost of three hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars, Greg.
Yeah, we've discussed this one before. Councils previously approved a budget amendment to allow for this work. By the way, we didn't chill it down here tonight intentionally to make, you know, try to influence your vote on this. But we've, because of the problems with our thirty-year-old control system, we've had the heat turned off in the building for three weeks now, because it is to the point where it requires turning valves off and on by hand all over the building. This is in the nature of uh a rehab and replacement of the control system, not the entire heating ventilating system. It would mean replacement of all of the hot water valves. There's a perimeter hot water system for primary heat on the building. There are a large number of cold air-only ducts with uh, with damper controls that are tied into the control system. There are a limited number of uh, of um warm air ducts as well with auxiliary heater units that are driven off the main boilers in the building. It will mean the replacement of every wall-mounted thermostat in the building. Uh these, this is a pneumatic system, so it doesn't work frankly, but it relies, in theory, it used to rely on air pressure. All of those will be replaced with electronic thermostats, uh not wireless, but with wires that will be run to either the water control valve or the air damper control that they operate. So that'll mean fishing those up through the, the walls. Happily, if, if, if the tubing doesn't break, tying the wire to the, to the tubing and pulling it through. And then it will also mean a uh automated logic brand uh system uh as far as the overall control for the system. Uh this is something, yes, we could probably go out and hire an architect or an HVAC consultant and bid it out. I'm not recommending that for at least a couple of reasons. A, time, we need to get this done. I've talked to a couple of architects and have heard they're hearing anywhere from six to twelve months out for contractor availability. Contractor we've dealt with since this building, the system was installed, Shouse has ensured us of the ability to get it done before. We should be okay through the cooling system, but for the next heating system, we need to make sure we have the fully automated system. So from that timing standpoint and uh being told that maybe this is a, a little at the high end of normal as far as a price range, but if you can get it done within the next six months, that's saying something these days. Uh I do recommend that we go ahead with it.
All right.
It's not public works construction requiring sealed bids. I, I should point that out.
Looking for a motion on this? Thank you, Darla, seconded by Tracy. Council discussion.
So we're not replacing any fixtures, is this all?
All controls, yep. We replaced uh both boilers for the building maybe five years ago. We replaced the chillers seven or eight years ago. This, to be honest with you, going back five or six years, well, when Mark Jack at our longtime maintenance work, uh head maintenance guy was here, we were saying, we've got a honkin' big project coming our way when it comes to the control system for the building. And uh that's what we're up against. Not using it as a selling point, but I think we also should be able to achieve some pretty decent energy savings. Certainly, we'll have much more sophisticated monitoring and management capabilities uh than we, than we have now. But you're right, it's, it's controls, the only major mechanical pieces would be the uh hot water valves. Those are being replaced. Uh from what they saw, they, and they've been through the system, uh there was a tech out here from Shouse for a couple of days. Uh the air, I think I'm using the right term, the air dampers themselves look to be in pretty good shape. Not to say they aren't gonna find one on a heat run somewhere that needs to be replaced, but uh it's not anticipated there'd be much in the way of those kind of system replacements. It's all about the controls and making sure you're mixing hot air and cool air properly, properly. And controlling this hot water system that's on the outer perimeter. Uh you know, the building with the full basement taken into account is about forty-eight, fifty thousand square feet of conditioned space. And then there's some separate hanging heaters, they're not gas-fired unit heaters, they're, they're tied into the hot water system in the gar- in the lower-level garage in the police Sally Port. There's some little independent units that heat the vestibules where you come into the building.
Anybody else, council discussion? This is a pretty big price take, uh not gonna lie, but I mean, it's something that has to get done. You can't have city staff working in a place where they're either overheating or have no heat at all. And I know speaking from being in this room last summer, I, I felt it was hot a lot of times and I, it, the cooling of it has to do something with these valves as well and it, it was hot in here a couple of days. And I kept telling Jamie, who was next to him, like, Jesus, are, are they gonna look at that yet? And you know, there wasn't a whole lot they can do, but it's hard to concentrate and get stuff done when it's not very comfortable at all. I mean, we're not talking about, you know, minor comfort, we're talking about big comfort here from Chief Minor. Uh sometimes being what, forty degrees downstairs i- in the middle of winter and nobody wants to work in those kind of conditions. Big price take, but uh staff has to get work done.
You could easily have a thirty to forty thousand dollar engineering fee if we're bypassing that. You gotta think that we're saving.
Right, so even when they say, I think Greg said something about uh, this is a little bit towards the higher end of the spectrum, but within the normal, so a normal spectrum, this would be at the higher rate. Uh you, Bill's right, if you would have a architect come in there, we would be over what that normal rate was if this ended up being the low bid anyway. Or even if we had a low bid, we might still be at this, this spot here by the time you get an architect involved. Obviously, there's a fee on them too. They're not coming, doing it for free, nor should they.
As a staff, we're not shy about recommending consultants, you know that, but in this, in this instance, uh we, we did you, not ripping on any, we used an outside mechanical consultant when we bid the boiler replacement. The recommendation was for an uber-efficient, super, super-high-efficiency boiler. And frankly, as we were getting bids, we heard not just from Shouse, but from other potential bidders. That's lovely, but if you go for a boiler with eighty-five or ninety percent efficiency, you're gonna have a lot less service calls and one service call buys a lot of gas. So, yeah, that's.
Are we, are we borrowing the remainder of this? Cause I know you came to us and there is an adjustment in one of our projects.
Yeah, it's borrowed money, but it's within the amount of borrowed money the council authorized for this year's capital budget due to two street projects, seven, the, the, the street portion of seven, I'm sorry, of Lincoln Street. And then the paving project on Zlatnik. So it's borrowed money, but it's within the same total amount of borrowed money as was authorized with the budget.
Okay, thank you. Any other council discussion? See none, roll call vote, Amanda?
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Husky?
Aye.
Jeff Delkey? Tracy Coach?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, on to K, which is the election of council members through seats and boards and committees, which is uh up to council discretion. Um do we have a list?
You know, I was just flipping through, looking for that and I don't see it.
Um can we pull, can Rick pull it up on the computer? Uh off this city website? Or is that not gonna show us how many people?
Hey, what if you wanna take a five-minute break, I can probably find Lisa's list.
Okay.
I apologize for that, that should have been on your agenda.
We'll take a five-minute break and then we'll get right back at it.
We'll take a five-minute break and then we'll get right back at it. Okay, I think we have the lists in front of us and we're gonna tackle it right from the top on down, which the first one is the advisory recreation board. Uh, the two that sit on there currently is Jeff Dulkey and myself. Um, I would like to stay on there. Uh, Jeff, do you wish to stay on there? Okay, does anybody else wish to serve on there? That wants to? No? Then we're gonna keep the advisory recreation board as is. Uh, onto the board of review, we have three of them, Scott Steckmesser, Bill Leclerc and Bonnie Shimilunis. Uh, Scott, do you wish to stay on there?
Yes.
Uh, Bill, do you wish to stay on there? Bonnie, do you wish to stay on there?
Yeah, I can stay on, but I don't, it's okay with me also if somebody wants it.
Does anybody else want to join the board of review? How often do they meet Greg?
Twice typically, once for the organizational meeting, that's coming right up, right Amanda? Then in August.
Okay.
Hear any appeals, which can't predict, but have been pretty few in recent years.
That's somewhat mandatory two hour meeting?
It's a mandatory two hour.
Yep. Does anybody want to be on the board of review?
Chance to get trained for when we do a revale and you'd be here for a few days. But I'll jump at once.
Bonnie, looks like you get to, you get to stay on there. Good work. Alright, then on to the BIDC and the CDA. Uh, there was Jason Ring on there who is no longer here and Tracy Coach. Tracy, do you wish to stay on there? Yes. Alright, does anyone want to fill Jason Ring's spot? How often does that meet Greg?
Uh, scheduled for once a month, but if, we do call it off if there's no specific business. So my guests lately, maybe seven, eight times a year.
Okay.
She sends out, they'll send out an update of this is what's happening. No need to meet.
Okay, Scott, that's a willingness to serve on that board. Uh, does anyone else wish to serve on that? Okay, then it's gonna be Scott and Tracy. Uh, commission for equal opportunities in housing, we have Tim Petrie and Bonnie Shimilunis on that one. Tim, do you wish to stay on that board or on that commission? I guess never because I was gonna say. You wanna stand? Bonnie, did, did you like that board? Bonnie, are you good on there yet? Alright, so we're gonna keep the commission for equal opportunities in housing the same. Uh, the committee on aging has been Bill Leclerc. Bill, do you wish to stay on that? And that's a morning meeting, correct? First Monday, eight o'clock in the morning or eight-thirty, eight-thirty, I beg your pardon. Does anyone want that?
Bill's done a really good job of reporting.
Yes, he has done a great job on reporting back. Uh, Bill, do you wish to continue?
Sure.
Great, thank you. So Bill will stay on the committee on aging. Alright, the community development block grand housing committee, we currently have Bonnie Shimilunis and Bill Leclerc on that board. Uh, Bonnie, do you wish to stay on that?
That's fine.
Okay, Bill?
That's another one that never meets, I guess.
That's a good, that's a good board.
A few years ago now, used to meet to consider each individual contract that was, uh, awarded for a housing rehab. Uh, due to some changes as far as privacy law protections, those aren't disclosed, so. The only thing that, that'd be a need to meet for is if there's a change in policy as far as housing loans, so. I don't anticipate a lot of meetings.
Uh, Bill, do you wish to stay on there? Okay, anyone wanna contest them for that spot? Nope, perfect. Stays the same EAB environmental advisory board. We have Darla Leclerc and we also voted in Tracy Coach. To also be a representative on that, I think halfway through the year. Uh, Darla, do you wish to stay on the EAB? Uh, Tracy, do you wish to stay on the EAB? Okay, anyone wanna contest their spots? Alright, then we will keep the EAB as the same. The library board represented by Tracy Coach. Tracy, do you wish to stay on that board? Okay, anyone wish to contest that? Nope, we're gonna keep it the same. Uh, plan commission, I sit on the plan commission. And I would like to stay on the plan commission, but does anyone wanna contest that? Okay, so we got, uh, we got Bonnie who would contest me on the plan commission, anyone else? Alright, we can send it to vote. Um. Okay, uh, show of hands if you would like to see Bonnie on the plan commission. Three. Alright, anyone that would like to see me on the plan commission? Cause I kinda like that one, sorry Bonnie. I like you Bonnie, but I like the plan commission too. You can come join us anytime.
Keep coming Bonnie.
Yes. Alright, I'll stay on the plan commission. Room tax commission, I have appointed Kurt Andrews already. Uh, to take my spot, who he has been doing a wonderful job of the room tax commission. Uh, the person that we need to vote in there then would be Bill Leclerc. Uh, do you wish to stay on the room tax commission?
Sure.
Okay, anyone wanna contest him? Alright, Bill, you're on the room tax commission. Uh, I don't know that this meets, but branding and marketing, do we meet there?
I didn't even know I was part of it.
You know.
And I didn't know I was chairperson for Two.
Yeah, you know, I'm sorry, I should check back because that, that group certainly has not met in the last year.
I was gonna get lumped in with, uh, tourism.
Yeah, let's pass on that one.
Yeah, so we'll skip the branding and marketing of which Scott, you've done a wonderful job not doing.
Because I.
Yeah, I mean, your reports from there were really, really good over the year.
I mean, no.
Sorry Bonnie.
I thought it was either last year or the year before when I heard the comment, I thought you made it, that we don't need it anymore. Yet, first of all, it hasn't been meeting for a while.
Right.
I mean, if.
I think, you know, and I'm sorry, there might be some loose ends there that need to be tied up, but I think the room tax commission and the new, uh, Explore Two Rivers. Entity will be carrying forward the, the materials that were developed for branding, economic development and the tourism office use them. If there's ever a need to convene an advisory group, that'd be fine, but I. Ah, boy, I'm sorry, that was a special committee created by council. I don't think it exists in ordinance.
I, I think it was kind of that same one as like when we did three sixty-five, it was a kind of a temporary one, so to speak, not one that was. In ordinance that I recall, cause that was my first year on here.
You know, maybe, what, if you don't mind, staff can look into that and maybe we bring back a, a resolution next time to formally put an end to it. So this doesn't happen again. And, uh, likewise, we, we, uh, after the dedication to Central Park West, we can formally. Cause then, then it's like, oh, here's when it started and here's when it really was off the books and I, I think what we got here is a legacy thing, uh, going on.
Good.
We'll report back.
And the last one on the list is the Main Street representative, which has been Darla Leclerc. Darla, do you wish to stay on Main Street?
Yes, I do.
Does anyone wish to contend her spot on Main Street? Nope, Darla, congratulations, you're on Main Street. Are we missing any? Seems like us.
Don't think so.
Okay, if there are, we will come back and we will make sure they get reappointed the way they are supposed to, um. I don't see any. On your list, that ring a bell? Okay, uh, for information only, you got that handy Greg?
Uh, sure, you want me to cover it? Just a reminder, first of all, tomorrow night is the utilities committee at five o'clock. That, uh, certainly, uh. Uh, and that utility committee members please attend, but, uh, all of the councilors certainly welcome to, that's meant to be a fairly. Deep dive, single agenda item about our, uh, chemical issues for lead and copper control. Some of the work that's been done as far as optimizing our treatment process, so. And there, and some DNR regulatory issues that we. May have to deal with on that, I guess is fair to say. So, uh, that's tomorrow night at five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Yep.
I'll drive fast.
On lead and copper. And, uh, of course, the next regular council meeting is the fifteenth. Normally, when there are five Mondays in a month, we kick the monthly work session over to the fifth Monday. Fifth Monday, of course, is Memorial Day for this month, so are there any objections? If we do the work session on the twenty-second instead, that would be the fourth Monday. If not, not, okay, we'll proceed in that manner. Um, and I would remind you, I don't recall if you've, if, well, you would know, if you've gotten invitations yet, but the city's. Tourism week event next week, Thursday, May eleventh at Hamilton Wood Type and Printing Museum. Um, some nice visuals, a report on, on our tourism program, uh, report from Brian Dean, our tourism director. And introduction of the new board for Explore Two Rivers. That's over at Wood Type, five thirty-two seven. Uh, next week, Thursday, the eleventh.
Alright.
All we got.
Looking for a motion to adjourn? Thank you Jeff, seconded by Bill. Any council discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you and good night.